All right, well, we're back. But uh, some people had to go down the hall for a little bit. We're having some technical difficulties. Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
I feel like I haven't seen you forever.
I know. What's up with that?
Well, our meeting's coming up soon though.
When?
I said our next meeting is coming up soon.
That's true.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah. So, is that on?
Yeah, I just turned it on.
Okay.
We were having some, we were having some technical difficulties. And I got it to work.
Gotta love those.
Alex actually isn't here. He uh, he's a sick kiddo.
Just hanging out doing stuff. Hi, girls.
Hi.
How are you?
Wow, just great. What is all this stuff done on?
I know. I know. Good stuff.
I could've said worse, but I didn't.
I've thought it.
I can't wait to hear about the speed dating.
Oh my gosh. That was crazy.
I bet.
It was.
It never ceases to amaze. And every single one of these that we go to, um, it always has just a little bit of difference, but it's, it is, it's fast and furious. It's just crazy, but I love it. You meet so many people in such a small amount of time.
It's, yeah. Yeah. This time it was longer. I mean, as far as the area, the room, it was long. And I wore the wrong shoes, I think.
You wore the wrong shoes?
I believe I wore the wrong shoes.
That's what happened in PC. I was like, I had some good shoes on, but not for as long as I was walking.
Yeah.
Hey, Kate.
Hi, Kate.
Okay. We're sitting here hanging out, so it's good.
There's a packet of information there for you.
Yeah. I'm gonna let Amanda talk about the visitor's guide first, then I'll go into those other stuff.
So, um, as, like it says on the director's report, we've gone through and sent out the, um, requests for prints quotes. And I've started receiving them. I'm still waiting to get at least one more. And, um, so once we get those in, we'll be able to figure out where, what we can do for, where we go for printing this year. I am still selling ads. We do have a few spaces still available. So, one of the things that I brought up with, um, is information, just in case the county would like to put another ad in this year. Cause I do have last year's ad still. So, we can use that ad or I can update it however we want to. But I do have all of that, that information, same pricing as it was last year, so.
Well, I definitely think we should do an ad.
For this full page is fourteen ninety-five, one thousand four ninety-five, so.
All right, I'll make sure that we do another ad in the state tour. No, that's more.
This is for the Kansas, this is our, our visitor guide, so the county visitor guide.
Okay.
Oh, motion.
Well, yeah, worse than fourteen hundred, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's me.
I'll say her the money. Hi, closing line, motion carries.
So, if you got through the, the director's report, it doesn't have any, everything on it, but I tried to get. I wasn't keeping very good track.
Pictures on it.
Yeah, we put pictures on it so you could see what the room looked like, where we did all the appointments. So, we ran around and did the quick, like, speed dating in all those tables. Sometimes we started at one end and we had to run to the next end to get to our next appointment, but, um, it was, uh, I thought it was one of the better ones I've been to, honestly. It was really good. We met a lot of, a lot of people. We did, in talking to them, most of them are not, they're gonna be, they're looking at booking for twenty twenty-four. There'll also be some twenty twenty-three, but most of those are done. But they're looking for things for twenty twenty-four. Some of them that had done international tours have now decided that during COVID, they had done some in the US and they were, they had a really good success with that. So, a lot of them, even though they have done international, they're gonna maybe do some international, but they're for sure going to change their focus to do more in the United States. And they wanna do the hard one. So, that was brought up repeatedly to us. And so, that, and then the second one was one of the educational things. This guy was really, really good. I don't think there were any of the educational things that were that, actually. A lot of really good tips and techniques and all those types of things. And we found out that you can make a, um, code on your phone and then you can just show it to people. They could take a picture of it, it goes automatically into their contacts.
I know, I saw, I learned that at the KC conference. I didn't know that either.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Awesome.
Yeah, so I'm gonna try to do that. So, we had a lady that was doing that and then, you know, they talked about, uh, everybody's wearing name tags. Take a picture of the person in the name tag, just make it simple. So, those are kinda some of the things we learned, but then we learned a lot more meaty stuff too. But, um, I was also gonna tell you that, uh, the previous executive director of Freedom's Frontier has passed away. And, yeah, uh, he was struggling with cancer for quite a while. Yeah. So, they've replaced him, or, yeah, replaced him with Lucinda Adams. I haven't met her yet, but she is the new executive director. And before that, she was on the Historical Society in Missouri, I believe. Well, I know she was on the Historical Society in Missouri for the state. So, um, along with that, I ran into and talked with an individual from Jefferson City in Missouri. And then we had one of our speed dating and setting next to an individual also, uh, on one of the tours and some other places. We've got a picture with her. She's a motor coach tour planner. And so, her and the person from Jefferson City and I were talking about doing a mystery tour. That could be as early as in twenty twenty-three, we don't know yet, but it's specifically for Freedom's Frontier. But they won't tell anybody that's on the tour what the mystery tour is until they're on the bus and getting ready to go.
That's gonna be fun.
Yeah, I think it'll be really fun, hopefully.
Yeah.
So, that one, I, you know, it's just really preliminary right now. Let's see. We did talk with Madden Media, we had a Zoom meeting with them. And, um, we talked in depth about digital marketing. And so, we've got a lot of digital marketing already and so, we're, I'm waiting for a package from them to figure out if we wanna do something with them. We are also gonna do, uh, an RFP with a company that's out of Topeka that the State Travel and Tourism Office uses. And that would also be kind of the same type of thing. The one that the state uses, um, I'm, it, it's gonna come down to price, honestly. I think they're both really, really great companies. The one the state uses, the only real positive, I think, is that they send video people and photographers out all the time for the state. So, when they're in certain communities, they just do extra ones and so, that community doesn't get charged as much. So, that's one of the, the things that, uh, would probably lean me a little bit more towards them, is the fact that we could get, get some more work done as far as the video and those types of things with them. So, we're still in the process of that, we'll see what happens. We had been working with Crystal for the new logo for the county and possibly CBB. So, we've got Tyler, who's kinda taking it on, and then Paige. So, they've been doing the one word about what, what do you think of when you think Junction City one word. And so, that's been going on and she's still, still posting on Facebook and on Instagram. And we're getting more followers on both. So, people seem to, you know, we've had people call and stop in that they really like it. So, we'll see.
They did a good job on Sunday, yeah.
Yeah, so, we'll see how that all, all goes. Um, one of the other things that we've done, and I haven't had a chance, and I haven't signed a contract yet with the, uh, with the, with the state, uh, but I think, I don't think the board will have a problem with it. But for thirty-five dollars a month, or approximately four hundred dollars a year, we can send them, uh, a monthly post. And there's one on there now that they are doing for us. And so, we promoted the Christmas stuff that's gonna be going on in Junction City. And so, it's on the Travel KS Instagram. So, if you go to Travel KS and then go to their Instagram, you'll see our stuff on there. And I think there's four or five reels on there that Paige had done and sent that in. So, um, that's, I think it, for four hundred dollars for a year, it's a lot of views that we're gonna be getting.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've also been making sure that we're getting the local events on Facebook and Instagram. Like I said, our numbers are going up, so people are starting to see stuff more. And it's been, uh, we've always done pretty well with, with Facebook. We have about ten thousand on there, so, but we're seeing an uptick in that. This is, I should've, this piece right here is the one that when we meet with the, um, individuals in the speed dating, we hand this to them with our business card. And so, now you can see kinda what we hand and they want a one piece that has just enough information on it that they get an idea of what and who we are. And then we have the conversation with them. So, that's what this is. This is an ad that was in the Kansas Association, KSAE, uh, that we run. And this is for individuals that are the directors of the associations that are headquartered usually in Topeka. And we've, this is, we've done it for the, well, ever since I've been here, we've been doing it. But it's basically going towards them and it's talking about us having two convention centers, conference center, that kinda thing, meeting space. So, we'll see, in the, um, their annual meeting, the banquet is coming up, I believe it's the seventh, eighth, something like that. And I will be going to that because I'm president of Meet Kansas and we're having our meeting at the same time and I'll have a table to meet with them also. Uh, the, this is a, an ad that hasn't dropped yet, but this is the final proof on it, you guys have got that. And it's in the Kansas, or the, um.
Travel Taste and Tour.
Travel Taste and Tour, yeah. And, uh, yeah, I just think it's, it's gonna be beautiful. When you get it on a full page, this picture just.
Yeah.
It, it looks great. So, when we talked to them, they basically wanted to do, they were, it's their winter, their winter one and winter adventure, so we hit pretty hard on the lake and the area around the lake and those types of things. One of the other big things is, and we talked about it at the board meeting, I'm sure she was there, uh, the byways of Kansas, I met with the state and they've given us the go ahead to start working on a byway. And so, that's a project that's gonna take three to five years. It's long-term, so it's just gonna take time. And with becoming a byway, they, they do a, a magazine, they do this every other year. There's a website that they have with the State Travel and Tourism Office that's dedicated to just the byways. And so, at the top of that website, they have whatever byway will be. And then they're featured for a full month and then they go on. And there's one person that's dedicated only to byways in the, in the state office. So, they're extremely, um, it's one of the areas that the State Travel and Tourism Office promotes heavily. And it's one that we should've had, we should have one, we should have, I think so too. So, what we're talking about doing is we'll start at the county line to the south, go up seventy-seven, go over into Wakefield, and then go into Clay County and then up. And then depending upon how far it goes, we may go over as far as Wakanda. And so, what'll happen is we'll be taking care of, um, Gary County. And then I have to go and talk with the other counties to see if they're interested or not. And if they are interested, then they'll be responsible for doing their counties. But I've, and then we'll produce a corridor, a CMP, a corridor management plan. And then we have to do an application, and I haven't done it yet, I've gotta go up and talk to Clay County and some of the others to see if they wanna be included. And then, um, we'll send that in along with our, um, paperwork to tell the state that we're gonna start working on it.
So, more of the title, cause on the back page, shows a map and then the titles.
I, you know, it has to be lake to lake, but I don't know that that's the right word. What will happen as we're going through the process, we have to form a committee. And we'll form a committee that is for the whole byway and will form, and then that committee will be made up of individuals from our county. They always request that there be a county commissioner, city, and then some at large because if the two of us are killed in a car accident or something, you need somebody that's gonna make sure that the byway continues to live. So, when you get ready to name them, you have to, uh, as a committee, you have to come together on the name and agree to it. Then it has to go to the state and the state has a byway committee which is made up of the Historical Society, KDOT, uh, State Travel Office, there's two other entities, I can't remember what they are right now. And they have to approve it. And then after we get that done, then we have to come up with a logo. So, then the logo has to be, uh, if you'll look at those, you'll see where the, each byway has a logo. So, you have to come up with a logo. And usually this, the byway's only gonna have a couple, three words at the most. Uh, the one I worked on in Sherman County is Land and Sky. And honestly, Kate, it was the hardest part of doing this.
Coming up with the name.
The name and the artwork was.
Yeah, I bet.
Excruciating.
I bet.
Like, should the wheat have little edges on it or should it be straight? You know, should it be waving or should it be standing up? It was, it just is a, a long process. So, that is, um, I have a lot of other stuff we could probably talk about, but that's pretty much the big, the big stuff we've been working on. Any questions?
Oh, um, the, you were gonna make recommendations for the board.
Thank you. Yes. I have some folks that have, okay, this is what I, what I'm thinking, I'll let you guys think about it. Michaela Joyce, she's the director of Main Street. Leslie Goodwin, who has said that she wants to be on, she's from Acorn. Craig Bender, who was the, the MAC director, he wants to be on. We've had an individual from, that owns Flagstaff Thunderbird, but I would, uh, think that maybe we look at that, yeah, look at her a little bit down the road, they haven't been out there very long yet. So, those would be my three, is Craig, Michaela, and Leslie.
I, I, I know I've talked to, um, them and, and all three of them are very motivated to be on. I know Craig has, still has a lot of contacts with Fort Riley, but not only that, he's put on, um, the soccer tournaments and, uh, I think that would be beneficial, especially since we've been bidding on some tournaments to, and I think he's interested in that area as well, so I'm, I'm good with all three of them.
Yeah. And that was my same thoughts with Craig. He's got so much, so much experience and he knows so many people and the sports side of it.
Yeah, we have nobody that's been involved in sports for a long time on there and so, you know, I mean, Ty's kids played sport, but I don't know if he was involved in, you know, the actual planning of tournaments and stuff.
Yeah.
I think it's huge.
Yeah, and we're gonna need that, especially as we continue. You know, the, the sporting events that we've been bidding on, I think, you know, it's just a matter of time. And, and we're gonna need some folks that, um, know how to run them better than I do. So.
So, now that you got credit books going, can you go back, I mean, can you start giving us financial breakdowns like the past?
Ty's gonna come in and work with Paige, uh, on Wednesday again. And so, when she does that, then that should be the final, the final thing that we'll be able to start printing things out.
Cause I saw it on the last.
Yeah. So, um, it's all inputted in there now, it's all just pretty much ready to go. Where is that sticky note? We ran the numbers from last year, yeah, I left it on my desk. We ran the numbers from last year and we're up, uh, year-to-date now, over seventy-seven thousand dollars from where we were last year. So, financially, we're, yeah. And then looking, and I should've brought that, I'll bring it next time. We are keeping in an Excel sheet that tells about where we're at, how much we've spent and.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and what our bottom line is. And so, we're under budget right now by about a hundred thousand, I think. So, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we get that, I'm sorry, I left that note on my desk.
I'll make a motion where you accept all three of those, um, appointees to the board.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
It'd be, um. What, what's her last name now?
Joyce.
Is she just going by Joyce?
Yeah.
So, you second?
Yeah.
Call a favor. Oh, same sign. So, it'd be Michaela Joyce, Craig Bender, and Leslie Goodwin.
Glad you reminded me.
Anything else?
Well, I don't know if I would've if I was talking, went talking about the meeting next week, I was like, oh, I guess we need to do that.
It said you judged the parade, so what did you think?
I thought it was great. I, I was just blown away. It, it was good, it was really hard deciding.
It always is.
It's, it was tough. It was, it was tough. But, yeah, and everybody was really happy and there, there was a ton of people out. I judged the parade and then I got in my vehicle and ran down and parked at the office and my, um, husband and daughter and son-in-law were all down there, kid, and they were just all, yeah. Actually, she took, she took pictures for us because, um, Jordan had a little bit of trouble with some of her, uh, folks that were gonna volunteer, so.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so. Yeah. But I was really, uh, impressed at how many floats there were.
Yeah, there's usually quite a few.
Yeah. And, um, I was talking to Jordan this morning and she said it was probably, it's about the biggest they've had.
Yeah.
And there were two or three that didn't show up, the floats. And she goes, that's okay, because she didn't know where she would put them because the whole parking lot was packed.
And they go all out. I think they go all out more for the Christmas than they do the, for, for July.
I was.
I thought it was great.
Yeah.
There was one that was just, I mean, you could've got another kid on that float, all packed like sardines on there. Just having a good old time.
Yeah. One of them, uh, I mean, we went back and forth on a couple of them, but one of them, we made the decision because they had, like, a lot of kids. And they were sitting in the back and they were all lined up perfectly and they were so nice and so.
That's probably the one I'm talking about.
It might. They had the dancers that were following them back behind, dancing the whole way. I was that, yeah, I was pretty, I was pretty impressed with, and those kids were so good. Uh, even sitting there waiting, they were so good. But, yeah. And we did the, oh my gosh, I can't think, Cedar, no, for the four age. I can't remember. The one that the county.
Oh, Park Creek, Park Creek.
For, yeah, four age. And it was really, it was, it was a tough decision. It was a really tough decision. But, you know, we tried to think of the theme and we tried to think of, you know, and that was, that was what we decided. So, next year will be fun. I'll maybe know what I'm doing, I don't know.
The weather cooperated.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was great, it got cold, but it was great.
It got cold.
Yeah, it was cold, but it was, it was a great parade. So, a lot of fun. I don't think so.
Thank you guys.
Everything is going really well. Paige is, just plugging along.
Plugging along. She's, she's a sponge, she's been picking up all kinds of, um, information and just flying with it.
She's, she's a good kid, I shouldn't say kid, she's, she's got a two-year-old, but, uh, yeah, she's doing a great job and, uh, she's got everything arranged properly and things all cleaned up and everything, yeah. So, she's the one that's gonna be doing our, our, I'll be helping, yeah, I'll be helping her, but she's gonna do our inventory this year. And she's ready to do it, she's excited about doing it.
Awesome.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll see y'all later.
Bye.
Bye. Are you, are you, uh?
No, Rebecca's coming in.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Are you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one change order, which was mailed out to you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we accept the change order. All there, on the same side. Motion carries.
And then the other thing I have for you is, um, Julie Gobert-Walter from, um, Area Agency on Aging called me on Wednesday. And they would like you to nominate Vicki Bobbitt to be on their board and she replaces, obviously she replaced. I almost think it might be Lawrence that's been on there for the two terms. Um, the position would be January first, twenty twenty-three through, um, December thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So that was their recommendation, Area Agency on Aging.
Yeah, and she already works with, um, the elderly, so.
Yeah, she's with I Care and I'm not sure what else she does.
And she's on, um, yeah, she's on, uh, the, the, uh, Little Well, Gary County, she works with them too, so.
Yeah, I make a motion to take the recommendation.
Second. On favor. I.
That's all that I have. Yeah.
Well, I think.
I guess it was because it was a short week last week. He didn't get a lot of change orders. We'll see what this week brings you. All right, thank you.
Okay, all the minutes cut out next week.
You didn't send anything out this last week, did you?
Okay.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, then I say we adjourn.